Call your wives.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Holland. Humphrey.
Yes.
Mines.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Sorensen.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Mayor Powell.
Item three are minutes. We have minutes from April 16th regular meeting and April 16th special meeting. Motion to approve both sets of minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Adoption of the agenda. Any Mike or John, any changes or corrections to the agenda as printed? Motion is second to approve the agenda as printed. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item five, under visitors to be heard. Addressing the council. Persons addressing the council shall use the microphone at the podium. Please raise your hand to be recognized, go to the podium and state your name and address. For items that are not on the agenda, members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard on any topic not on the agenda. Remarks are limited to five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. For agenda items, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item. Public testimony will then be closed and the topic will be given to the governing body for possible action. At this point, only city council members and staff may discuss the current agenda item unless a council member moves to allow another person to speak and there's unanimous consent from the council. Questions from council members however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the presiding officer at any time. At this time, it's a pleasure for us to have five proclamations to present this evening and I've asked our council members to read these and so if the first one, Tom, if you would read the Older Americans Month proclamation please.
In honor of Older Americans Month, engage at every age. Whereas the city of Vermillion and the Main Street Center include countless older Americans who enrich and strengthen the community. And whereas the Main Street Center is committed to engaging and supporting older adults, their families and caregivers. And whereas we acknowledge the importance of taking part in activities that promote physical, mental and emotional well-being, no matter what your age. And whereas the Main Street Center can enrich the lives of individuals of every age by promoting participation in activities that promote mental and physical wellness. Involve older adults to offer wisdom and experience to the next generation. Promoting home and community-based services that support independent living. Involving older adults in planning events and other activities at the center. And providing opportunities for older adults to volunteer, learn, lead and mentor at the center. Now therefore, we, the governing body of the city of Vermillion, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Older Americans Month. We urge every resident, no matter your age, to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as vital parts of our community. Dated at Vermillion, South Dakota, the 7th day of May 2018.
Thank you, Tom. Crystal?
Thank you, and I just want to briefly say the Main Street Center is very proud to represent and support older Americans. And we want to thank you as the council and of course Mayor Powell for helping us to engage all of our senior citizens at every age for this month. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second proclamation is the Stamp Out Hunger Proclamation and Kelsey, please.
Proclamation for letter carriers stamp out hunger food drive day. Whereas hunger fests away to people nationwide, including children, seniors and military veterans. And whereas the Vermillion Community Food Pantry shelves filled from winter holiday giving are bare in late spring. And whereas when the school meal program ends in summertime, children must find alternative sources of food. Alternative sources of food. And whereas the Vermillion Community Food Pantry assisted 9,481 individuals during 2017. And whereas every year on the 2nd Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food as part of this nation's greatest and largest one-day food drive distributing the donations to local food banks. And whereas the letter carrier stamp out hunger food drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those they serve. Since the pilot drive was held in 1991, more than 1.5 billion pounds of food have been collected. And whereas we recognize all letter carriers for their hard work and their commitment to their communities. All of the food collected in our community stays in our community and we support carriers' efforts to help those in need in our community. And whereas the National Association of Letter Carriers continues to work to end the challenges of hunger in South Dakota through its 26th annual Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive. Now therefore, we, the governing body of the city of Vermillion, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 12th, 2018, as letter carriers' food drive day in the city of Vermillion and the county of Clay. And we encourage the citizens of our community to support the food drive by placing non-perishable food items in or near your mailbox on food drive day. Your letter carrier will pick up the food while delivering the mail and together we can help feed all of our hungry. Dated at Vermillion, South Dakota, the 7th day of May 2018.
Thank you, Kelsey. You got a microphone?
It's not every day I get a microphone, so thank you, thank you to all the postal carriers that helped with this. Thank you for the food pantry that provides, it's vital for the citizens of Vermillion and Clay County that we have this program to help support those that are food deficient, so thank you, council.
Thank you. Our next one is a Special Olympics Torch Run proclamation and Brian, please.
Law enforcement torch run for Special Olympics week. Whereas the South Dakota law enforcement torch run is a grassroots fundraising campaign to raise money for the Special Olympics South Dakota programs. And whereas the Special Olympics program is a year-round athletic competition in which over 2,100 individuals with disabilities from South Dakota compete in various athletic events. And whereas in 2017, the torch run event and other fundraising activities raised over $564,000 for Special Olympics South Dakota. And whereas the 2018 law enforcement torch run in Vermillion on May 14th honors the Special Olympics athletes from Vermillion participating in the 2018 Summer Games, May 17th through 19th. And whereas a core group of runners from around the state will finish at the game's opening ceremony in Spearfish, South Dakota on Thursday, May 17th, 2018. Now therefore, we, the governing body of the city of Vermillion, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim the week of May 14th through the May 18th, 2018, law enforcement torch run for Special Olympics South Dakota week. And urge all of its citizens to observe this week with their time to make a better tomorrow for our community. Dated at Vermillion, South Dakota, the 7th day of May 2018.
Thank you, Brian. Sarisa, please.
John Cole, the Assistant Director for the State of South Dakota Law Enforcement Torch Run and also Police Officer of the City of Vermillion, I want to say thank you guys for recognizing law enforcement torch run for Special Olympics. Currently right now, actually, we obviously just had the polar plunge here in Vermillion and it was a record-breaking plunge this year that we haven't been able to reach goals that we have in the past year, so thank you for that. And as some of you may or may not know, obviously the Summer Games are in Spearfish this year. Next year, the city of Vermillion gets to host the Summer Games for the first time in over 25 years. It'll be in Vermillion and it'll be for next year and the year after that, so thank you city of Vermillion for being so great for our athletes of Special Olympics. And the torch run will be coming through the city of Vermillion on Monday, so a week from today, at about 12:15 PM. It'll be kicking off at the high school. Runners will run from the high school down Main Street and at the county courthouse at about, we should hopefully get there about 12:45 at the courthouses. So give or take depending how we do for the run and then we'll be moving on from there on to the city of Yankton as well, so we hope that you guys can come out, join us for the run. You can either run or send us off as we take off running down Main Street as well, so we're going to bring lots of commotion, so if you hear lights and sirens and all that good stuff, that's just us running down the street. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, public service recognition. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Just from the Sazak community here in Vermillion, we want to thank you guys and the police department here in Vermillion for helping us out and making our lives better, so we just want to say thank you to them.
Thank you very much, Kyle, and thank your friends in the back there also. Thank you. Our next is a public service recognition week proclamation and Catherine, please.
Proclamation of public service recognition week. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. And whereas many public servants, including police officers, firefighters, emergency medical service workers and others, risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas, public servants include a variety and countless number of occupations. Vermillion residents benefit from the dedicated city employees working in the solid waste and recycling, street, light and power, library, water, wastewater, parks and rec, police, emergency communications, fire and EMS, code, engineering, finance departments and throughout the organization to provide day in and day out with efficiency and integrity the diverse and essential services needed by the citizens of our great community. And whereas, without these public servants and public servants at every level of government in the United States, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore, we, the governing body of the city of Vermillion, do hereby proclaim the week of May 6th through 12th, 2018, as public service recognition week in Vermillion, South Dakota, and call upon the residents of this great city to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county and city. Dated at Vermillion, South Dakota, the 7th day of May 2018.
Thank you, Catherine. John, if you would take care of that, please. And finally, we have one Vermillion Area Robotics Club proclamation and Steve, please.
Thank you, Jack. Proclamation, congratulations to the 2017-2018 Vermillion Area Robotics Club. Whereas the Vermillion Area Robotics Club fields multiple teams known globally as Team 1008 involving approximately 27 youth ranging in age from third graders to high school seniors. And whereas the Vermillion Area Robotics Club sent an unprecedented five teams to the VEX World Robotics Championships and multiple levels of competition including both elementary and middle school VEX IQ challenges and both middle school and high school VEX robotics competitions. And whereas Teams 1008B, 1008C, 1008E, 1008M and 1008X competed and emerged highly ranked and highly decorated for the remarkable skills in science, technology, engineering, math and robotics at the regional tournaments, the South Dakota State Championships, the Create U.S. Open Robotics Championships and the VEX World Robotics Championships. And whereas, the inspiring performance of the Vermillion Area Robotics Club against the top teams in the world was done with the support of local Vermillion businesses, organizations and community members. And whereas, Coach Susan Rolfes was awarded the Volunteer of the Year Award at the South Dakota State Championship for her dedication to VEX IQ robotics across the entire state. Now therefore, we, the governing body of the city of Vermillion, South Dakota, for and on behalf of its citizens, do hereby wish to recognize and extend congratulations to the 2017-2018 Vermillion Area Robotics Club team and coaching staff for their regional, national and international accomplishments. Team members Henry Anderson, Lydia Anderson, Nate Bonzak, Caleb Buchholz, Carter Buchholz, Joel Dahlhoff, Kayden Dial, Calvin Granis, Logan Gregg, Will Hackimer, Dominic Herrera, Josie Herrera, Quentin Herrera, Boone Hollywood, Sidney Johnson, Hari Karakasami, Baroon Kadakara Kasami, Lucas Kirby, Caleb Myros, Roslyn Olson, Steen Olson, Liam Percy, Caleb Reins, Emily Rolfes, John Rolfes, Roger Rolfes and Young Ju, and coaches Angela Anderson, Colleen Herrera, LD Herrera, Mike Rolfes and Susan Rolfes. They represent a bright future for the city of Vermillion and Clay County, as well as the surrounding area and frankly, the nation. Dated here Vermillion, South Dakota, the 7th day of May 2018.
Thank you, Steve. Is somebody here to receive this?
Thank you for recognizing our talented group of kids. I would also like to thank area businesses, organizations and individuals that have supported our robotics club and contributed to their success. Whether it be a place to teach non-competitive robotics, our library, hosting robotics camps, USD, helping Vermillion host their first robotics competition or funding entrance fees to large events, they make it all possible. When I started this robotics club four years ago in our garage, I never imagined it would blossom into the organization it is today and will grow to be. These kids, parents and coaches work super hard, summers, nights, weekends and school holidays, to be the best. They are simply amazing. As Albert Einstein once said, "Logic will get you from A to B. Imagination will take you everywhere." Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe at some noon council meeting you could demonstrate your projects. No, I said maybe at some noon meeting you could do that. Tonight we have a pretty full agenda. I don't know if you want to stay for the rest of the meeting or you're certainly free to leave. It's your pleasure. Run while you can. Thank you, Jose. All right. Next on our agenda, our public hearings, item A is a first reading of ordinance 1371 to rezone 125 Prospect from R2 Residential to R3 Residential District and Jake, please.
I'm going to try to not take it too personally that everybody left when I got to speak, but so just beforehand, we have a few rezones tonight and I just want to do a little bit of background before we get into that, just to help clarify some future things. Couple of these rezones relate back to the 2008 zoning ordinance that we put into place and so this did a few things which comes up in a few of these rezones. The first was that it created a number of new zoning districts. A few things to point out, at that time, business districts allowed all residential uses. The thought was, it was good enough for, to be done in a residential area, you know, business might as well allow it. And secondly, residential density in several of the zones at that time, you were basically allowed to have as big of a multi-unit as you could depending on how large the lot was. So, for example, right now in the R2 zone, you can't have larger than a fourplex. In the R2 equivalent, pre-2008, you could have really an unlimited amount of units provided you had X amount of space for them. And then, once these new zones were created, they were applied to the city and many cases kind of taking, trying to match equivalents, but in some cases you'll see non-conforming uses were created. Now what that means is you have a use in a zone where it were to be built nowadays, the city staff would not allow it to be, you know, that certain use to be put into place. However, we realized that, you know, non-conforming uses, there's still a lot of investment that has been put into those, so we still allow them to operate indefinitely, assuming that the use doesn't stop for more than a year and assuming there isn't some sort of damage that causes more than 50% of the building to be damaged. So, in many cases, rezones are being sought to help kind of fix the non-conforming uses because the banks might be a little leery of giving financing, it might be more difficult to sell or get insurance. But when it comes to non-conforming uses, a couple of things to keep in mind, just because a non-conforming use was created doesn't mean that the city needs to rectify that situation. In this train of thought, you could look at it as, you know, the rezone was an attempt to sort of phase out certain uses, move a neighborhood into a different type of character and in that way, the zone should stay the same. The second train of thought is, you know, maybe the direction of the rezone, it didn't quite pan out, maybe rezoning it to make the non-conforming use conform, maybe that is in the best interest of the city. So there's certainly multiple ways you can go about it. One helpful way of looking at this that I've heard is that when it comes to a rezone, you should look at it as, if this lot in question were a bare piece of ground, would the rezone make sense? You know, would the uses that are allowed in this proposed rezone, is that compatible with the neighborhood? And then lastly, just before I forget, on all of these rezones, if the city council does decide to deny them, the property in question can't be involved in another rezone for six months. So just something to keep in mind. With that, I'll move on to what Mayor read off, ordinance 1371, the steals of the property at 125 Prospect, moving it from an R2 to an R3. I have a map of that pulled up here. This petition was submitted by Jamie Schaeff of DJ Square LLC. The rezone just applies to the lot at 125 Prospect. On the lot right now, there's a five-unit dwelling that has rentals in it. Right now, it's a non-conforming use. In the R2 zone, you can't have more than an R4. Staff is somewhat concerned about this primarily because of the small size of the lot, 5,610 square feet. It's too small to build anything more than a duplex. Right now, we would only allow a single-family residence to be built on an equivalent lot. At 2008 during the old zoning ordinance, this would have been an allowable use of a five-plex, but as I mentioned earlier, at that time, the zoning code used square footage. This lot would have needed to have been about 11,000, 12,000 square feet larger in order to accommodate this use. So it wasn't a compatible use or an allowable use, but the lot was not nearly large enough to comply with the code. The owners obtained the required signatures which allowed the planning commission to consider it. We followed all the notification requirements. The planning commission considered this item at the April 23rd meeting. At that time, we had one neighbor voicing concerns over her perception of the maintenance of the property. At that time, the planning commission voted eight to zero to recommend city council deny the petition for rezone. I think from staff's perception and the planning commission as well, this definitely entails spot zoning. This is something you won't find in our code, but what it is, is a policy the city has generally tried to follow where we avoid having just one lot zoned differently than everything around it. On the map, you can see that everything around this is R2. There's central business block away, but everything around this is R2, so this would be a definition, classic case of what spot zoning is. Like I mentioned earlier, staff is kind of concerned about the size of the lot, given that a five-plex, you know, certainly it would not fit our standards nowadays to be built on this lot. Even if it moved to an R3, the lot would still be too small for a five-plex. And going back to kind of the bare lot example, I believe staff's opinion is that if this were a bare lot and it were being requested to move to R3, I don't think we would, we wouldn't think that made sense. So otherwise, that's everything that I have. Happy to take any questions. And I know we have some representatives from the owners here, from Premier Realty, Pam Jacobson and Jamie Badke, who I've been working with, who are representing the particular owners in these cases. So I'd be happy to take any questions and I'm sure representatives would as well.
Thank you, Jake. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this topic at this point?
My name is Kayleen Reynolds. I live at 110 Prospect and I'd point out that there is a lot almost the same size across the street. They put a duplex in and it's just too darn small for the area. The people don't have any room to go outside and do anything, which means they're outside, because we all want to be out in this nice weather after a long winter, so they'll go out and grill on the sidewalk and they play football and games out in the streets, because there just simply isn't places for them to be. And this apartment is just right up to the edge of the lot. There's places for one vehicle to park, but when you have five apartments, you have people splitting apartments, you have boyfriends coming over, girlfriends, friends. We have a real problem with parking in the area. This is just way too big for the tiny lot it's on. If you rezone it, they're going to be able to rebuild something just as big, if not bigger, which it just isn't going to work out. And I'm one of the owner-occupied homes. Then, the city of Vermillion has been very supportive of the owner-occupied homes. I think we provide a very unique service in these areas where it's mostly college students. We're modifying some of the behavior that goes on. We keep our homes nice. We keep flowers and we keep everything trimmed up and it makes the other owners keep their places up. And if nothing else, we say to the college kids, "Don't do that. You're going to hurt yourself." If you lose these owner-occupied homes, these areas are going to get pretty unsightly. And if you allow these people to continue to shove more people in a smaller and smaller place, you're going to lose these owner-occupied homes. They're going to move to other places and you're simply going to get worse and worse behavior going on. I just really think it's important to not keep shoving more people in these small areas. It just, there's more trash. They don't stay inside. They're out and about and you just have more people coming around. We're also very close to downtown, so when anything happens downtown, which is two and three nights a week, those people come up in the areas and park their cars. So it's more and more people all the time. I'd also remind you that the people asking you to rezone this, they don't have to live in the situation they're creating. They get the money, but they live nowhere near it. And it just, it's too small. It really is just too small to allow it to be an area where you put more people there. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this topic? This is a public hearing. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this topic? A third time, anyone else? Seeing now, I'll turn it to the council for deliberation. Tom, please.
Quick question, if I might. You've checked with the neighbors around here also, that's part of the process. For example, the people immediately east of this, I don't know if that's the one you heard from or not, but...
The neighbor I was referencing who spoke to the planning commission actually just before.
Oh, okay, okay.
But the letter I received asking for signatures said that you people, that this had been inadvertently rezoned and they could not get insurance and please sign it, which I felt was disingenuous because it wasn't rezoned. It was rezoned long before this gentleman purchased it. He simply did not check everything out and missed that he couldn't build, rebuild or do whatever with it and now he's, I felt the letter wasn't really telling the whole story to the people who signed it.
story to the people who signed it.
And I think lot size is kind of key to any plans, but I wanted to clarify that, so thank you.
Further discussion, council? Steve, please.
Well, I think my, I think my point of view is that because this is surrounded by an R2 district, that it should stay an R2 district. So I'm going to move to deny the petition.
Is that a motion? Steve, was that a motion?
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second, to deny the request. Is there further discussion from the council? Any further discussion?
I guess I have a question. So, so, okay, my understanding, so we want to move R3, can I have Jamie or someone come up and explain kind of what they maybe had planned for it?
Sure. He doesn't have any plans in this event to tear the property down and rebuild. It's mostly for, if he does go to resell it, he can't get a loan. It would have to be sold by cash or contract for deed, which is what he's on right now. And also, the concerns of getting insurance on the property. He has no, he has no intentions on tearing it down and putting up a sixplex, or...
So it'd be the same use that it is now?
Same use that it is right now. Correct.
Thank you, Jamie. Further discussion, I'm sorry.
I was just asking maybe John, so why is that...
I guess I don't see a problem with that myself, if he just has access to the actual reason he wants to do it. My guess, maybe I'd be like, so I'd be even approval for just letting do the rezone, I would guess. I mean, it doesn't sound like he wants to do anything to me.
Steve, please.
My thought is that this owner may decide to do it in whatever he wants in the short term and keep it the way it is, but if we move it to R3, then that allows future owners to do anything, something different, that we have no control over.
Well, right, but they still gotta come to us anyway.
No, no, not if it's R3.
Yeah. So, and the non-conforming use that exists right now can stay, because it's in an R2 district now, anyway. So it can remain the same use that it is right now. We're not changing the use of that building. But if he sold it, and the next owner decided to be, let's say, have a single-family home, and then they sold it, then the next owner couldn't do more than four people in that non-related, right? Am I saying this all right? So...
Further discussion. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to deny the request. I'll draw a voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item B, first reading of ordinance 1372 to rezone 807 Cottage and 23 East Duke from general business district to R3 residential district, and again, Jake, please.
All right, so this was a petition submitted by Harlow Hatley of Hatley Investments LLC, who's the owner of 807 Cottage and 23 East Duke, seeking to rezone the property from general business to R3. I also have a map of this one as well. At this time, those properties make up Cottage Villa Park, which is a mobile home park, with currently 12 mobile homes in it. It's important to note that right now, this is a non-conforming use of mobile home park in the general business zone, and rezoning it to R3 would not make it a conforming use in the R3 zone. Mobile home park is a conditional use, so if it were to become a conforming use, they would have to go through that process. My understanding, and there are others here that can speak more on this, is that they have a potential buyer who is interested in developing this land were it to be rezoned to R3. So the owners obtained the required signatures, allowing planning commission to consider this. We followed the notification requirements, and the planning commission considered this item at their April 23 meeting. At that meeting, we had several residents of 23 East Duke and 807 Cottage show up, and they were mainly concerned about being displaced if the rezone was approved. Many of these mobile homes are old enough and have, you know, other, they don't fall within our code to be transported elsewhere, so you would have a situation where these folks would essentially have to abandon their, their mobile homes in where they're at. The planning commission noted, though, that the current residents are still at the same risk if another sort of development came in that was more fitting to the general business. At that time, the planning commission voted five to three to recommend the city council deny the petition for rezone. I think there were a few concerns voiced. One was over, you know, what would happen to the current occupants. The second was that that time, there was a lack of a clear plan for the property if it were to be rezoned, what other development would look like, and at least one planning commission member voices belief that this land should still stay within the general business zone. Staff would point out that the next item on the agenda is a rezone of 711 Cottage, so this is being done. They were applied for separately, and that's why we're considering them separately, but it sounds like a potential buyer is interested in this lot and 711 Cottage, where they, to be rezoned to the R3. Staff's recommendation would be that if you did decide to rezone 807 Cottage to 23 East Duke, only then should 711 Cottage be rezoned, and I'll speak about this more later. We don't want to have 711 Cottage zone to R3, and then this one to stay general business. We did have some questions about drainage, especially the Cottage Avenue, that has been a concern. After speaking with some of our staff, it sounds like the drainage from this area will go, some of it west of Cottage Avenue, some of it north to Duke Street. Once on Duke Street, it'll travels overland to the inlets at the intersection of Duke and Elm. This is an area where in the past, we've had some drainage problems when we get heavy rains. I think it's worth noting that were this to be developed in another fashion, they would have to follow a drainage plan, something they probably didn't have in the past, so the drainage situation could improve, it could get worse, but that is something to consider as well. With that, I'm happy to take any questions, and again, we have representatives here, both for the seller of the land and the buyer, potential buyer.
Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this at this time? Yes, please.
My name is Albert Anderson. I live at 807 Cottage, number 30. They're trying to displace us, and if it was for the purpose of progress, I could possibly agree with it, but it's for the purpose of money. And the whole deal is basically what's more important, the citizens or somebody lining their pockets? You know, I mean, we've come, we've had, I've been here 12 years. All 12 years, we've been in fear of losing our place to live. You know, nobody's concerned about us, they're concerned about how much money they get. And from a personal opinion, if the landlords would stop acting like slants, or slumlords, and take care of the property like they should have, if the council would, would look at that, maybe there could be a different alternative. We're being displaced, we've been mistreated and abused the whole time. I've been in there 12 years, we've been mistreated and abused the whole time we've been in there. I've got an electrical problem, I can't get anybody out to fix it. You know, it was two weeks ago when I paid my rent, I need somebody to come fix it. Nobody does it. My power box is off, nobody does it. They're blaming us for the condition of the trailer park. It's not our fault. They, you know, the trailer park is supposed to, is supposed to take care of maintenance, garbage, and everything. They, you know, I mean, you know, they come pick the garbage up, they come cut the grass whenever they're ready, and they miss spots. So it looks like, you know, it looks like a slum, that's why I say slumlords, you know? And if we're going to be displaced, then, you know, we are no more than pawns in somebody else's pocket. And I just don't feel like that's what, you know, the pledge of allegiance meant when you stood up for it. It says, you know, "And justice was," where's the justice for the 12 families there? We're going to be displaced, nobody cares.
Thank you, sir.
And we pay taxes here, you know, 12 months a year. So, you know, I think we should count for something. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this topic? Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Ryan Eichelberg. I live at 807 Cottage Ave., Lot 2, and I feel basically the same way. I recently bought my trailer, first-time homeowner, and I was very proud up until I got this news about the rezone. And I understand that I'm the owner of the trailer and not the owner of the land. I fully comprehend that. My, my issue is, is, is that I still have a year left on my loan for my home, and if I am to be displaced, and I have to, I can't afford rent somewhere else if I'm still paying off a trailer that I have to abandon. I'm gonna get no money back from it, for no money back that I, that I spent to buy it, and it was the same company that sold me my trailer that is now selling the land underneath of it, and I feel quite disillusioned by that. I spoke to the building official, building officer, Farrell Christensen, today in his office, and I spoke about my roof, and how it's not a pitched roof, and how there's our ordinances that I've read, that talk about a three-twelfth grade pitch for a trailer and moving it in town. And he talked briefly about how there might be some kind of exemption that the city council makes for, for trailers that are already here in Vermillion to be able to be moved to other mobile home parks in town without abiding by those ordinances. And he said he was gonna, you know, hopefully work with me on that and, and, and try and affect some change. But right now, I'm just really worried. I, and this is the one thing that consumes my mind about my home and my living situation. I feel like some of us are, you know, possibly facing homelessness if, if we are kicked out of, of our homes.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this topic? Yes, please.
My name is Jamie Koontz. I live at 807 Cottage Avenue, Lot 26. I'm a single mom with five kids. I work a full-time job. You guys talked about getting signatures and letters going out. None of us got a letter. We got a sign in our front yards saying there was a hearing. I don't have money to move my trailer. I, in one of the lucky ones, I actually own my trailer. I just paid it off in March, and now I hear that they're gonna sell this trailer park probably for more student housing. It's like, who's more important, the people that are gonna stay here and create a life here for their children, or the students that are gonna come here, go to school, and then when they're done, they're done with the city? And that's it, they're never gonna come back. And you guys have more than enough land throughout the rest of the city to build more student housing. Right now, I'm always in fear of my vehicles being messed with by all the students that hang around in that area. I've had my children's bikes stolen from my front yard because of the college students. And, you know, it's just a little upsetting, I've only been here for seven years. I really liked it here, and now it just feels like I'm kind of being walked on, just because somebody came here and offered a huge lump sum of money just to buy this land to make more student housing, and it just doesn't seem fair. So now, I go to work every day worrying about if somebody's gonna come and park their excavator outside my trailer and try and get me to leave. I don't have anywhere else to go. I can't afford to pay rent in any of these houses around here. They're upwards of $800 to $1,500 for rent, and the landowners won't, you know, drop the rent a little bit for low-income families, and I think that's a little unfair. I mean, is the new landowner, if he does buy the land, is he gonna help all of us move our trailers, because we don't have enough money to move it somewhere else? I mean, what are we supposed to do? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to comment on this item?
I'm Pam Jacobson. I am a realtor and property manager for Premier Real Estate, and I do manage the Cottage Villa Mobile Home Park. I've had it listed for almost four years now. In GB, we have not had a single retail or commercial person interested in that property. This is the first time that we have had any interest at all, and they want to do some very, very nice apartments. Sarah Taggart will be able to give you some details on that, about the, she, she's representing the buyer. I'm the listing agent.
And one, sorry, I'm Jamie Badke. One thing to note also on this is, the property is already a non-conforming property. It is and has been on the market for several years, and someone, someone could come in and put in a business district, and not have to go through the rezoning process, and still the current tenants would be displaced. So by switching it, it's not necessarily affecting the tenants that are there right now. It just might happen sooner.
Okay, thank you. Sure, please.
Pam or Jamie, I believe, I understand that Mr., if I say it right, Eichelberg and Ms. Koontz are the owners of their particular home?
They're owned by the people living in them.
Oh, okay, I understood Mr. Anderson was a tenant, that he rented the house.
He rents the land.
Okay, so everybody does own their own...
Yeah, they're, they're all owner...
They all rent the lot, yes, but they all own the house, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please.
Hi, I'm Sarah Taggart. I'm with Premier Real Estate, and I am here representing my client, who has the accepted offer in on both this property, 807 Cottage, 23 East Duke, and then the upcoming 711 Cottage. So, part of the appeal to my client for these properties is his desire to take a blighted parcel that is being underutilized currently, and to invest in the community, fill a housing need, all while beautifying the area. Okay? And this is definitely being underutilized. There are 28 slots in that mobile home park, and only 13 are occupied at the moment, so it could be fulfilled in a much greater way. My client is both a USD grad, as well as a Vermillion High School grad, and definitely has vested interest in, and loves this community, and wants to do something to better it. It's not just strictly to make a, you know, a ton of money. We want this to, to beautify the area, for sure, he does. This parcel has been on, like I said, as I mentioned, it's been on the, on the market for over nearly four years, and the only interest has been to have it rezoned to R3 and made into a residential area. Additionally, if people were, you know, if, if a buyer was to come in and want to do something general business, or a retail space, there's many open properties on Cherry Street, which would probably be, have more visibility, visibility and better, be a better fit for nearly any retail or commercial usage, okay? Also, this, this property is adjacent to residential areas, so, you know, it's not like it would be the only bit of residential housing in the area. Its location is really nice for R3, because it is within walking distance to some nice attractions and to some businesses that, you know, it's even not too far really from downtown. My clients, my client envisions a garden-style apartment concept for this area. So, basically, it would be several buildings around the perimeter of the area with a courtyard in the center, which might have a picnic area, like a picnic, a little picnic area, or shelter, or like a gazebo, but there'll definitely be some green space. So it's not, he's not envisioning just packing in, you know, as many tightly-packed square boxes, you know, with just a few parking slots. It's, you know, it's gonna be more of a, also like an entrance from both Duke Street and Cottage, so there'll be two entrances, and like I said, a nice courtyard in the middle. Landscaping also would be part of this. These units would have some upgraded features and finishes, and primarily be two, three-bed, two-bath, with possibility of maybe some two-bedroom units also. The ground-level units, he's imagining to have attached garages and outside entrances. The ground-level units, he's imagining to have attached garages and outside entrances. So all of them will also have their own laundry and outdoor patios or decks. So these are, will be kinda more high-end than your typical student apartments, appealing maybe to like professionals, families, maybe graduate students or non-traditional students, that kinda thing, so not your typical college apartments. But the garden-style apartment concept will be really attractive, and it'll be a vast improvement over, you know, the current usage and, and better utilization of the, of the parcel. So we're asking that you approve the rezoning request so that we can move forward on filling a housing need for the community and greatly improve the usage and appearance of the currently underutilized parcels.
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else in the, sorry?
May I say something?
Please.
Again, I'm Alvin Anderson. Everything that I've heard from the prospective buyers representative or whatever is a possibility, is a promise, you know, but there's nothing concerning the residents that are there. Again, we pay our taxes, which is what we're supposed to do. We're, you know, we pay the lot rent, which is what we're supposed to do. We pay for services that basically we don't get because we're supposed to do it and we, and because we are responsible citizens, you know? Now, someone needs to have a responsibility to us. Apparently, the landlords don't. They're concerned about lining their pockets, which is my belief. I don't think they're concerned about beautifying the neighborhood because, I mean, come on, you know, you're gonna tell me you're gonna put in three-bedroom apartments around the school? Not likely, you know? You're gonna tell me that business people and all the dis are gonna move here? Where are they gonna work? You know, I mean, you've got, you look at your businesses, you look at all of this, and this is about as fictitious as Santa Claus is. I mean, if you really sit back and think about it, this has to be just a straight-out lie to get this rezoned. And I would appreciate it if you would consider that. Thank you again.
Anyone else? Yes, please.
I live in Yankton, one hundred twenty-first, East Twenty-first Street, no longer in Vermillion, South Dakota, but I was a resident here for a long time, raised that boy over there and two others in that neighborhood, actually. We used to deliver papers in that neighborhood, and now he lives there, and he has a house there. He's proud of it. And now, it looks like because of some ordinance that was put in place, from my understanding, from what Farrell Christensen told my son today, that ordinance was put into place because they didn't want trashy trailer houses to be brought in from Sioux Falls, South Dakota at the time. But here we have a trailer house that is nineteen seventy-six, which I think falls within the limits, I'm not sure. I'm not sure about that. But to put a pitched roof on it, he has to spend three thousand dollars. He paid ninety-five hundred dollars for that house, and he still has a year left to pay on it. That's a lot of money, three thousand dollars for that young man. So he has to leave the place. It just stays there, and some bulldozer comes in and we just, gone? That's what happens? Is this what happens in Vermillion, South Dakota? That's what we do? We just go and just level that place and put a brand-new place up. I get, I understand, I understand progress, but I also understand this boy was born right here in this town in the hospital. And so do these other people have been paying their taxes too. What do we do with them? Is there any help that this governing body can provide at all? Any, anything? Take that into consideration. These are your fellow citizens of Vermillion, South Dakota. Of course, I pretty much like that one over there. He's my son, and I'm gonna stand up for him. So this ordinance about not being able to move his trailer house to another location in Vermillion, South Dakota because he doesn't have a pitched roof? That's it? A pitched roof? Maybe I come over and take a look at what he's done with it and how the, how he's improved it in the inside and in the outside. This guy has a nice little entrance on it. What is he gonna do with that? So I'm concerned for him. I'm concerned for the other people in the community here who have to be displaced. That's just a bad word when you own a home, being displaced. That's what I've gotta say.
Anyone else in the audience? Yes, please.
I do want to let you know that my, my buyer hat, does have concern for those who are in the mobile home currently. He's, this displacement is, I mean, it isn't ideal by any means. It, it's a tough situation to be in. And it is too bad because a lot of those mobile homes are older. You know, I'm just hoping that maybe the city, and, and by the way, it's neither the fault of the seller or the buyer that these mobile homeowners are in the position to be displaced. The buyer nor the seller is the one who rezoned, are the ones who rezoned it. So it's the city and the rezoning that has been, put them into this position where they could possibly be displaced. So maybe something could be worked out where there could be some exceptions for those owners to possibly move it to another mobile home park, and maybe some help somehow to, you know, so that they aren't left in a really bad situation. Because again, it is the city's rezoning and putting this property in a non-conforming position that's ultimately causing the hardship for these owners. Something to consider. Thank you.
I think it's time to turn it to the council for deliberation. Questions, please?
So I guess what I had heard when we were discussing this earlier was that whether we rezoned or not, these folks would still be in danger of being displaced, which I guess to me would, would point towards that this is not necessarily just a city issue if it doesn't actually matter which it is, that they're in danger. Would you agree, John, or am I misunderstanding?
Dial the calendar back four months ago and a year ago, and you're in the same situation. The current zoning of general business does not permit mobile homes in it, so they are facing the same situation today as they were a year ago or five years ago, whatever you wanna, whenever magic number you wanna put on it.
So my, my understanding is that the risk of folks being kicked out of their homes has to do with their land being purchased and going towards another use, not necessarily the zoning that it is in.
I would say that's correct because I'll just pull five years, for example. Five years ago, it was a non-conforming use, as it would be if it's rezoned R3. It's still a non-conforming use, the mobile homes are. So, you know, the owner of the property has that same ability today, five years ago or five weeks from now, to evict the individuals because it's a non-conforming use. They're, they are not protected by the zoning in the current situation or the proposed situation.
Further discussion?
If I might, Jake, for clarification, do you have your map still?
Yeah.
So when we look at that, the, the sort of lavender mauve pinkish area, that's all general business.
Yes.
Including the, the lot south of the fire department parking lot, north of the lamplighter. That's general business also.
Everything here is general business. Directly north is R3, and then to the northwest is R2.
And, and that's the snag. If it's, it's general business now and it really, which is like R4, is that correct, John?
I'm sorry, I was.
General business is kinda like R4 or something, for trailer parks.
R4 is the zoning classification for mobile home parks.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, I was working, good question.
So there, I think that's a very good point that, that she brought up, Kelsey. It's a, it's a snag that, it just depends whatever somebody who owns it does with it and its business right now, which could force people out anyway if they, if they change. So I, my other question is that's kind of eating at me is, we talked about it being, I think the word was blighted or something? I don't know what word you used. I wanna know how it got blighted. There were people living there. Was it taken care of or not? Will the new place be taken care of or not? How did it get to this blighted state? I mean, these are things that, these people live there, so it's really, it's really a big question.
Just as a recollection, a few years ago, the city was about to condemn it, and then they did clean it up some. So it's not just now that.
All right. Well, I'll give them credit for that, I guess.
Well, that was necessary for them to continue.
Brian?
Pam, I have a question for you, or the, the real estate buyer, would that be?
Of me?
Yes, please. How many buildings would there be, and how many rooms would there, if this passes? How many different buildings would your potential buyer like to make for apartments?
Well, it's not, oh, don't, sorry.
Can't hear you.
It's not a hundred percent sure yet, but the max would probably be thirty-six. We're thinking possibly six, six-plexes. It might be five, six-plexes, something along that line. There needs to be enough built there to justify the cost of, of, you know, to make the economics work on it. But yeah, something like that. But it's certainly not gonna be densely packed, just, you know, big square buildings or anything. Again, we do want some green space, and we want it to be pretty, and we want it to, to have a nice area that those tenants can enjoy outdoors.
Because I, I also live in that area, and neighbors have come to me asking me not to vote for this because they're concerned about the extra traffic on, on the streets because cars speed up and down the streets anyway, and I know that's not your buyer's fault, but if there would be thirty-six more apartments or thirty more apartments, there would be like thirty more cars potentially on that.
Well, there's already, there's thirteen people living in there, and I don't know how many people live in each of those.
So that would be, let's say, fifteen, ten, fifteen more cars. There's a, there's a nice park that's getting redone there, and I, and I would hate for, I'm not saying that these people would be speeding up and down the streets, but that has been a problem in the past, and just, just added cars every day for, for this. I'm just truly concerned about the, the neighborhood as it is already with the amount of traffic, so I'm gonna have to vote no for this, sorry.
You brought up an issue. Thank you. You brought up an issue, and here's a possibility that we might consider, and that is table the rezoning matter while staff researches adjustments to the two thousand seven ordinance that doesn't allow pre-nineteen seventy-six units that don't meet HUD standards. And so give the, give staff an opportunity to look at the two thousand seven ordinance and see if we have some wiggle room on something like that, so.
That would be great.
I would.
And, and maybe, maybe add to that, look into the possibility if someone is displaced that whether they might get a crack at the new places at some kind of a rate. If, if that can be researched, that might be way off the, off to the side, but.
I don't think we could obligate a buyer to do something like that.
Well, but it wouldn't hurt to ask the Realtors. I agree with your, your idea, and I move to, to table this for further study by staff.
Does that require a second?
It's a motion.
Does that require a second?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I would, I would second the table with just the explanation that, I will say, I'm incredibly uncomfortable about us doing anything that forces people out of their homes. Incredibly uncomfortable. And so if we don't, after this tabling, come back with a plan to figure out where these people are going to live and help them, not just say, you can move all of your stuff out here and figure it out. I mean, it would be great if we can work somewhere with the ordinances, but we know that some of these trailers physically cannot be moved, that they're not gonna stay together. And this has happened other times when we've closed down mobile home parks, and those folks don't have a place, and we don't have affordable housing to move them into. And so I support the tabling, but I will say when this comes up again, unless we've got a plan, I'm gonna have a really hard time supporting the rezon.
Did you have another comment that you wanted to make?
Yeah, but I can't remember what it was.
All right, we have, we have a motion to table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you for your time.
Can I say something about that?
Yeah, sure. Point of whatever.
I just wanna say that, like Kelsey, I'm sort of dismayed by the lack of concern for the lives of the people who live in this area, and the, obviously, they care about where they live, and they care about their homes, and the, the dismissal of that is very distressing. And I wanna thank them for coming today and saying their piece.
Okay, item six C, first reading of ordinance thirteen seventy-four to rezone seven eleven Cottage from general business district to R3 residential district. Jake, again, please.
Probably getting sick of me here.
Oh, we got one more.
Yeah, plenty more time to be sick of me. So this, again, the rezone of seven eleven Cottage goes along fairly well with the item you just heard, to take this lot directly south of eight oh seven Cottage and rezone that as well to R3. Like we mentioned, there's a buyer who is interested in purchasing both this lot and the two north of it, due to development you just, just heard about. This lot is owned by Paula Lawrence and Mark Lawrence, and so they received enough of the petition signed that the planning commission, excuse me, planning commission was able to consider this. At their April thirtieth meeting, the planning commission considered the item. At that time, there were representatives of both the buyer and the seller. We heard the description of the proposed development. To point out a few differences from the picture, the two mobile homes that you see on here actually were removed in the last week, and so right now, there is just a commercial building as well as a residential building on that lot. When the planning commission considered this, at that time, they voted five to one to recommend city council approve that petition for rezon. Again, this was a week after the, the one before it, and at that time, the planning commission did want to give the input that they only believed seven eleven Cottage should be rezoned, if eight oh seven Cottage and twenty-three Stuke were also rezoned as well to avoid spot zoning. Staff would certainly concur with that recommendation. So at this time, happy to take any questions you might have.
Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment on this? Yes, please.
I'm Mark Lawrence, and my address is nineteen oh four Flag Mountain Drive in Pier. I'm a VHS graduate and also a USD graduate, and my mother is currently living in Vermillion also. Mr. Chair, I'm Mayor, and members of the council, thank you for taking the time to consider the rezoning of these properties and the opportunity to provide comments. My mother and I submitted our petition because we received a purchase offer on seven eleven Cottage and also on eight oh seven and twenty-three Stuke as a combination purchase package. And it was contingent on rezoning it to R3 allowing for the apartment garden-style apartment complex like you just heard. So my mother and I have received two purchase offers on the property, and both of them wanted to continue the use of the property for R3 use, but we haven't received any offers for commercial use. Based on that, we believe that the proposed garden-style apartment is the best use of the properties as determined by the market. We're also thinking that that specific use would provide more tax revenue for, from the properties. So we're asking you to vote yes on rezoning these properties, and I know that you just tabled the other properties, but we are just concerned that the properties don't continue to be underutilized along with other vacant lots and buildings and waiting for commercial redevelopment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Jake, would you clarify for me that the planning commission didn't want to approve this one if they didn't approve the other? Is that correct?
That's correct. In this case, they felt that seven eleven Cottage should be rezoned, but only if you did decide to rezon eight oh seven Cottage and twenty-three Stuke to R3 as well.
Aye, one.
That certainly would seem appropriate, given the situation. Dead motion? Dead motion? Motion in a second to table this, further discussion?
I just have a question.
Sure.
Is there, is there anyone living there anymore in that?
Yeah, we have a.
Somebody, somebody would need to move in with you or something?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries, thank you. Let's see, item six D, first reading of ordinance thirteen seventy-three to rezon five nineteen Adams or five twenty Prentice from R two residential district to R three residential district. Again, Jake, please.
Alright, last rezon right here. So this petition was put in by Harlow Hatley of Hatley Investments, who owns five nineteen Adams and five twenty Prentice, seeking to reason on the property from the R two to R three. As you can see from the map here, five nineteen Adams and five twenty Prentice, each house an eight-unit apartment building. These were constructed in nineteen sixty-three, prior to the two thousand and eight rezon, an eight-plex would have been allowed except the lots weren't large enough to accommodate that. The owners obtained the required signatures that allowed planning commission to look over this. We follow the notification requirements, planning commission considered it at the April twenty-third meeting. Currently, the buildings are non-conforming use at that time, planning commission was told, the owner was just seeking to bring this into conformance with our code. At that time, planning commission voted eight to zero to recommend city council approve the petition to rezon. I think staff, our only concern is that this doesn't fit quite as well into what we define as spot zoning, but you can see it, it's a little bit more of a mix. It does include two lots, it borders directly on R four on three sides, it has R two, there is R three a block away, but otherwise, this would just be the only R three directly south. There is another large multifamily building that would probably fall into the R three, but it wasn't part of the street zone. At the meeting, we did have, I guess, no one showed up at the meeting, but we, we did have a few letters of protest from two neighbors that were included in your packet. Otherwise, we did, at the planning commission, had one current occupant, but he was just curious what the signs out front meant essentially, so and he didn't have any complaints on it. So at this time, we'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay, public hearing, anybody want to comment on this one? Turn it to the council for deliberation.
Does the difference between R two and R three simply mean the size of the apartment building?
That tends to be where you would see it, is the, the more dense housing, you could still have any of the R two uses in an R three, but R three, you can start to have more than a four-plex. So yes, that is, that is the main distinction and some of the setback requirements would vary.
And probably more parking, paving?
No, for us it.
About the same, maybe. I don't know.
Well, for, for us, the, the parking requirements are based on the use, so for example, these buildings, if you were building them new, we require two parking spots for every unit or one per bedroom, whichever is greater. So regardless of whether this falls into the R two or R three, the, the parking is based on the number of units.
Further questions from the council?
Move approval?
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Jim, can I second? Okay, I'll second. Further discussion? Right?
Jake, you said that an R two is up to four, right? Up to four units?
That's correct.
And R three is four plus, what's the, what's the maximum number?
So we don't have a, I don't believe a maximum, where it would come in, you'd start to run into things, it's just because this is an R three doesn't mean you could build a one-hundred unit apartment. You'd start to run into restrictions mainly based off parking and that sort of thing and, and the height, but, so essentially, there really isn't an upper limit on the R three.
Further discussion? Steve?
Why would the owner, what's the harm that's at keeping it at R two right now from the owner's perspective?
Yeah, well, because it's non-conforming use like anything else, they're allowed to keep operating, but let's say the building were damaged past fifty percent, they could not reconstruct it in the same form that it's in. If they're looking to sell it, they'd probably have a hard time getting financing through a bank because it's a non-conforming use and insurance difficulties as well. That's typically why an owner would want to have their non-conforming use be turned into conforming.
And this building's been there since nineteen sixty-three.
That's correct.
Further discussion?
Just a quick question, thank you. Are they, are you looking at replacing what the existing buildings with new ones? No.
No, we just want to be able to, I mean, if you wanted to go to the bank, I'm sorry.
Yeah, please.
If you wanted to go to the bank right now and give, let's say to, if we wanted to loan to, you know, bring it up to date or whatever, although it's up to date anyway, but a bank would not loan him any kind of money. If he decided he wanted to sell it, he would not, there is no buyer that would get a loan unless it was a cash sale or a contract for deed. So it really ties up the, the seller's options. He's not, he's not wanting to tear them down and rebuild at all.
I think one of the key ones is if there's over fifty percent damage, you can't rebuild it.
Right.
The way it is now.
If it were to be a tornado come through or a fire, he would not be able to rebuild it and, and insurance wouldn't pay anything.
Could I add a question, as long as you're here? We're, so you're looking at this property being improved rather than letting it into a, whatever the stage was?
Oh, it's been being improved over the years. They're very nice apartments.
Is that the goal or is it to sell it, do you think?
Well, he's not getting any younger. He may want to sell at some point, Harlow Hatley, so.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? We have a motion in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries, thank you. Thanks, Jake.
Thanks for putting up with me.
You can have tomorrow, no. Item E, special permit to exceed permissible sound levels by no more than fifty percent for Habitat for Humanity Clay and Yankton Counties at three ten Washington Street, on or about July twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen for a front yard barbecue, and Mike, please.
Habitat for Humanity Habitat for Humanity has replied for the special permit to exceed permissible sound levels by no more than fifty percent for their front yard barbecue event. This will include music on July twenty-sixth and five to eighth to be held at three ten Washington Street. This is the location where the Habitat for Humanity group will be building a new home there. There is the press to close Washington Street later on the agenda. This front yard barbecue event is being held as a fundraising event at their future site. City council need determine at this public hearing if there's a suitable location with appropriate facilities during the allowable time for the event. The Habitat group has paid the twenty-five dollar fee. Administration recommends issuance of the special permit unless information is presented at the hearing to indicate there to be a problem with the related noise.
Thank you, Mike. A public hearing, does anyone want to discuss this item? Turn it to the council.
Move approval?
Motion in a second to approve the special permit, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries, thank you. Item F, first reading of ordinance thirteen sixty-nine, you didn't give me a short version of this one, Jake.
That's fine, you can blame him.
Update the subdivision ordinance, Jose, please.
The current subdivision regulation has been, was adopted in two thousand and eleven with the ordinance twelve fifty-one. That ordinance adopted at that time, updated or amended completely the nineteen sixty-seven subdivision ordinance from the Code of Ordinances. Since the two thousand and eleven ordinance, the subdivision chapter has seen one minor amendment dealing with the creation of private roads. However, there have been several items that should be amended in the subdivision ordinance to better service the public. The major items that this amendment at hand will address are the removal of the plating and design requirements for the land outside of the joint jurisdictional zoning area and the changes to the section dealing with the access to streets and roads. Since adoption of twelve fifty-one, Clay County has adopted a subdivision ordinance that addresses development, development outside of the city. The Clay County subdivision ordinance was adopted in two thousand and fourteen and has many of the same requirements as the city, city's current subdivision ordinance. Removing any of the requirements places, placed by the city's current subdivision ordinance from the code would simplify the process for staff and it would also make the development process much more efficient for the public. Another part that has been changed extensively is a subsection dealing with access to streets and roads. This subsection controls a number of access points to a street from building lots. The goal of the subsection is to minimize the number of street cuts in order to maintain a safe environment for the general public while preserving an acceptable level of traffic capacity on the streets. The current subsection generated a few complaints from users, developers. The main complaint was that it was difficult to follow since each development was reviewed on a case-by-case basis and this made the requirement vary from instance to instance based on fronting, the street fronting the project, the use of the property, the topography, shape of the lot, et cetera. The new subsection will try to eliminate as much of this as possible by providing the developer with a way of determining the number of access points allowed based on the classification of the street fronting the project and the length of the frontage. The city will still have to review the applications to determine if there's a more restrictive type of access to be required. Staff, it should be noted that staff did hold a public meeting on the twenty-fourth to discuss a project or to the proposed changes, excuse me. The meeting was advertised on the broadcaster, the equalizer. We did have it on the city's webpage, Facebook page, Twitter. We also mailed notices to the contractors, developers that had pulled the building permit over the last couple of years. Besides Jake, nobody attended the meeting, so.
Drawn.
Besides that meeting, we also had a, a couple of meetings with the planning commission, informational meetings, and we also had an informational meeting with the city council prior to the January twen, twenty-fourth meeting. The planning commission did review this ordinance at their April ninth meeting. During the planning commission meeting, they did raise a concern with removing sections dealing with development standards in the county. Additionally, city staff has met with a developer that has been very active in constructing attached and detached single-family homes, so regular homes and townhomes. A developer had concerns with the fact that the city limits the number, the number and width of street cuts on attached family townhomes, attached single-family homes with a budding garages to one shared street cut and a maximum of thirty-six foot wide driveway. The developer had concerns that the width of the, of thirty-six feet is not sufficient for larger vehicles to back out of a double garage in a safe manner. The city has maximum widths, like I mentioned earlier, in driveways to provide a safe environment for the general public. Limiting the width and number of driveways for all uses is done to increase the safety of pedestrians, bicycles and vehicles. Combining driveways and limiting the width has been a practice in the city for over a decade. The number of, the current maximum width has worked well for many years, however, the number of garages and size of cars has been increasing. After meeting with the developer, staff has changed the proposed ordinance as presented to the planning commission to accommodate the larger garages and vehicles. The change would require that, that all attached single-family homes and duplexes with a garage less than sixteen feet from each other have a shared driveway with a maximum width of forty-eight feet. This increases the width of an, by an additional six feet for each, excuse me, for each of the owners. There's no financial consideration, the only cost would be the publication. Administration recommends approval of first reading of ordinance thirteen sixty-nine.
Council?
Move approval?
Motion in a second to approve, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, I'm sorry, question?
Does the, the extra width, does that help accommodate things like bicycles and whatnot in, in our future development?
Well, that would just be for their driveway, so.
Just, oh, just for the driveway, okay.
Yeah.
But the joint jurisdictional property around us is, does this do anything to, to change any protections or add protections since it, it abuts farmland in many cases, so.
I, I guess, I don't think, I don't think so. The only portion of the ordinance that we have that they do not have would be regarding utilities. Everything else is, is almost a copy, it's almost verbatim from what our ordinance was. With the utilities, since they don't offer any utilities, what they have been doing is that they require either a single-family developer, a single homeowner, or a larger developer, if they ever have those, to actually provide a letter from the utility provider saying how the utility needs are going to be met. So they don't have it because they don't offer it, but they do have other items, I guess, to curtail any issues.
Pretty much remains the same except for the width and.
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries, thank you. We turn now to old business, item seven A, second reading of ordinance thirteen seventy, amending alcoholic beverage ordinance for changes in South Dakota state statute, and Mike, please.
There was some extensive revision to the alcoholic beverage laws during the two thousand and eighteen legislative session that will become effective July first, two thousand and eighteen. There's three licenses that will no longer be issued, the on-off sale malt beverage license and off-sale South Dakota farm wine. Currently, we have none of them issued. There's the off-sale malt beverage license, currently there are six licenses issued, the off-sale malt beverage license with off-sale South Dakota farm wine, there's currently two of these issued. These changes will remove the references in SDCL thirty-five four-two, seventeen seventeen A and twenty from being included in our ordinance. The legislation already also was changed to create consistency to allow for alcoholic beverage types to sell and serve alcoholic beverages between the hours of seven AM and two AM every day of the year. Christmas Day, which used to be in state statute prohibited, now was removed from that and allowed by city ordinance may restrict local sales on this day. There were some language changes made in the statute whereby issuing license, the governing body deems the applicant a suitable person and whether the governing body considered the proposed leg, location suitable. The city council reviewed these items at the April second noon meeting with the consensus to update the ordinance to have the sales hours be consistent from seven to two every day of the year, no longer restrict Christmas Day for the certain license holders. The ordinance was drafted and reviewed by the city attorney. First reading was held at the April sixteenth meeting and there's been no comments received since then. Administration recommends approval of second reading of the ordinance and a roll call vote is required for second reading.
Thank you, Mike.
Move approval?
Motion in a second. Don, would you set up the materials for our roll call, please? Okay, the results are eight yes, zero no, motion passes. Thank you. New business, item A, request from Habitat for Humanity Clay and Yankton Counties to close Washington Street from Dartmouth Street to Clark Street on July twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen from four PM to eight PM for a front yard barbecue at three ten Washington Street, and Dan?
Yeah, this is in reference to the noise ordinance as well. If you look at the, the map in front, so there's the, the street closure from Dartmouth down to Clark Street on Washington Street and here is the actual future site of the Habitat for Humanity location. So they're requesting the street closure, so for the activities to, from four to nine PM and they're requesting the setup half hour prior and they're also going to remove everything by nine PM. Also requesting placement of signs for the event parking forty-eight hours prior and along the west side of Washington Street. The Habitat for Humanity has also sent out notification letters to all the affected residents in the area, which included an invitation to the event as well, which is open to the public. The staff recommends approval for this event, pending your questions.
Council?
Move approval?
Motion in a second to approve the closure, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Okay, thanks. Item B, request by Allison Buckman on behalf of USD for placement of portable storage unit in alley between Varsity and First Baptist. unit in alley between Varsity and First Baptist Church in excess of time permitted by city code. And John, please.
Thank you. This one's pretty straightforward. The Charlie's Clothing Store where you can purchase USD apparel will be moving to a temporary location between the Varsity and the barber shop there for the summer months while Two East Main is finished, and then they'll relocate into Two East Main. Our code provides that a portable storage unit like that can be placed for 14 days, which is relatively short. Most of the time we run into these, it's related to people that are moving in or out of a house, I mean, for short term. They're looking for about three and a half months. They would like to place it at the south end of the alley between the Varsity and the Baptist Church. We felt that since it was a considerable amount of time in excess of what city code allows, that this would be appropriate for the city council to grant or not grant an extension for them to have it from May 14th to September of this year.
Counsel? Motion second to approve the request. All in favor signify by saying aye. Close no? Thank you, John. Item C, request from the Dakota Days Executive Board to close Main Street from Norbeck Street to High Street on Saturday, October 6th, 2018, from 7:00 a.m. to the conclusion of the Dakota Day Parade. And Dan, again, please.
Yeah, so the map in front is the historical parade route that's been used before, so it's going to start with the check-in on Main Street, south of Norbeck Street, over by the Vermillion High School, and then the parade start area is going to be, is requested at South Plum, at the corner of Prentice Park, going all the way down to High Street. So the dotted line is the setup area. The barricades have, one recommendation from emergency services that barricades are manned at all times this year. I think there was a little hiccup last year of getting through one of the barricades just from traffic stacking up and someone not there right away to get a vehicle through to evacuate someone. So that was added to this request as well. Cleanup for the event, so the event is going to start at 7:00 a.m., and cleanup at the conclusion is going to be conducted by the Students Enhancing Resources for the Vermillion Enrichment, and staff recommends approval for this action. Depending on your questions.
Thank you. Counsel? Well, I haven't heard a second yet, so... Go ahead and second, then we'll have discussion. We have a motion in a second. Further discussion. Steve?
To your knowledge, as any... You probably don't know this, Dan, but Dakota Days used to start, the parade used to start at 10:00, not at 9:00. And as someone who hosts hundreds of Vermillionites on Dakota Days Parade, on the parade route, I get requests to move the parade back to 10:00, so people can sleep. Now, has USD expressed to you any inkling that they have reconsidered or justified this time, this early time of 9 o'clock?
Have they to you?
And I'm being very unfair to them.
Have they to you?
We're actually taking backwards.
Yeah. Well, at some point, I want someone to explain, I want at least someone to tell me why they're doing it.
Why tonight?
Because we're already past 8:00.
I don't have an answer for that one. I would say my kids are going to be up at that time, so I'm okay with it.
I agree. A lot of people have asked about that.
Yes. So I'm sure we'll have other opportunities...
Steve, maybe in your role, maybe in your role, you could ask the administration. You might know somebody.
I might.
So, and just to chip in, Dan was helping us out doing this, and he's done a great job. The event organizers who submitted the requests have been a little bit, I will say, difficult to work with, hard to communicate with. I did take the steps to invite them to this meeting tonight and recommend that they be here to answer these kinds of questions. Does not like they, he did my advice, but, so we did try to have someone here to help out with that, but...
I leave it to Steve to research this. We have a motion in a second. Are you ready for the question? All in favor signify by saying aye. Close no? Motion carries. No. Item D, Library Board of Trustees Appointment. I have contacted all of our council persons, and I am happy to name Katie Beam as the new library person. And I guess we need that as a recommendation. Motion second to approve Katie Beam as the new library board member. All in favor signify by saying aye. Close no? Motion carries. Would you?
Yes.
Item E, Policies and Procedures Committee Meeting Report. And Addison, finally.
Yes.
Is this your last dance?
This is. Yeah. I will be back for future meetings on this particular topic, but, yeah. Unfortunately, it is, and I would like to thank counsel and thank you, Mayor, for everything this last year. I don't want to take too much of your time, but I'd be remiss if I didn't get to say thank you.
Thank you for all you've done.
It's been an honor. This is the Policies and Procedures Committee Meeting Report from April 18th. Over the last six months, the administration and council have been discussing the possibility of establishing a Human Rights Commission for the city of Vermillion. In this time, staff has presented over this idea at two separate city council special noon meetings, and at the April 2nd special noon meeting, the Policies and Procedures Committee was assigned to review and discuss the possible policies and procedures that should be included in a proposed ordinance which would establish a Vermillion Human Rights Commission for the city. At the meeting, the committee met with staff to review and discuss specific sections of the proposed ordinance, which created the most questions or where different options for implementation were available to choose from. Some of the policy items discussed and agreed upon at the April 18th committee meeting were a seven-member commission versus a five- or nine-member commission. If pertinent, the VHRC may request information from city employees, but only through prior approval from the Office of the City Manager. There will be no public hearing panel or mediation option included in the alternative dispute resolution procedures. Instead, the VHRC will facilitate the resolution of discrimination complaints through a receive, determine, refer, and transfer procedure framework. The VHRC would therefore have no regulatory enforcement authority when aiming to resolve these disputes. The VHRC may request either party involved in a dispute to meet for a predetermination conference if they feel that more information would be useful to determine probable cause of discriminatory practice, and any complaint filed with the VHRC, as well as any answer filed from a respondent, must be verified by a notary public and a personal signature. By the end of the meeting, I am pleased to report that the commission came to a consensus agreement on each and every policy item and option, and requested that staff draft an ordinance proposal which reflects the policy decisions made by the commission. At this time, administration recommends that the city council receive the Policies and Procedure Committee report. Additionally, copies of the draft ordinance proposal will be distributed to the city council at this time. Keep in mind that this draft is currently being reviewed and edited for legal word choice by the city attorney, but not for content, if I am correct. And the city attorney's edits will be received and added sometime this week, and I will promptly email the update for you all upon receiving the, and adding those edits. Furthermore, at the upcoming May 21st special noon meeting, the council and staff will review the draft ordinance that was presented at the direction of the committee. Following the discussion, the city council will be asked to confirm the administration's proposal to have the first reading of this proposed ordinance at the regular council meeting on the evening of June 4th.
Of which?
June 4th.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
I move that we acknowledge receipt of this report from Mr. Addison McCauley.
Second.
And thank him for his work.
Second.
Motion second to receive the Policies and Procedures Committee's report. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Close no? Motion carries. Thanks, Addison.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I'll miss you guys, too. Thank you.
Item F, Utilities Committee Meeting Report. And John, please.
Thank you. Similar to the item Addison had, the Utilities Committee met. As you might recall, back in 2015 when WAPA joined the Southwest Power Pool, our transmission assets here in the community became eligible to receive payments through the SPP system. We did enter an agreement with Missouri River Energy Services to help represent us in that process and to facilitate the implementation of our assets in the system and other aspects of moving it into there. The original cost presented to the city council was $65,000 for that work, and that was done in August of 2016. And then there was an amendment to that in February of 2017, as there were some comments filed that indicated it was going to be a little bit tougher sled to get those assets included in there. And so they did, they were able to, they did go to the settlement process. They did reach settlement last summer, and they went through the FERC process to get that accepted and put into place late 17, early this year. And then in March of this year, we received notice that they not only, Missouri River with their financial analyst, as well as the legal firm working with FERC, they had exceeded the $115,000 threshold by $46,000. So we convened the Utilities Committee to discuss that and have them present as to why that took place. The Utilities Committee felt that there is justifiable reasons for that due to some of the comments that were filed and the length of the process that it took. I would note a couple of things on that. One is that we, those will be eligible transmission, transmission maintenance costs. They'll be included in the calculation to determine what we should be paid back. So we will, in essence, be able to use the money that you pay to go against our costs that we incur to, in that year, receive a higher amount back through SPP. So in a way, that money does come back to us. The Utilities Committee recommendation was that the work and the time that it was justifiable, and that to present this report to the city council, and that bill will be coming forward to you probably within the next month for consideration and payment. I would note two things. One is that Missouri Rivers only billed us for the original $65,000. They've not billed us for the $50,000 in the amendment or the $46,000 of additional cost, and that a settlement of this will generate approximately $820,000 a year for the electric department with respect to our transmission assets.
Thank you, John. I'll answer questions for, on this. Do we receive it? Is that the idea?
Send.
Motion second to receive Utility Commission's report. All in favor signify by saying aye. Close no? Motion carries. Thank you. Item G, Adoption of the 2018-2022 Capital Improvement Plan. And John, please.
Thank you. This is an annual process that the city council's gone through with staff, I'm going to guess probably about six to eight years, and it's really the start of our budgeting process. We kind of look at our current budget year, in this case, 2018, and then different ideas and projects are presented for the next four years to form a five-year capital improvement plan. Over the last two years, we've started with that document indicating what this would mean with respect to our second penny fund, our general fund, as well as our STIP money, which mainly goes to streets. So through that, we presented this back in early April to the city council. We had some tweaks and adjustments to that, and the document before you represents the final version of that capital improvement plan. I might just highlight a few of the items that might be taking place in our 2019 budget. Obviously, this will be up to the city council to approve, but some of the larger items that are included in there would be Anderson Street reconstruction, basically from Clark, East Main Street, some additional upgraded pavement treatments and maintenance, the second year of our five-year plan for AMI, which is our new electric and water meters that will allow for more digital or remote read of those. It is the final year, next year, of the street lighting conversion to LEDs. We have some, the Brooks Industrial Park Storm Drainage Project for the northeast part of the community. We have several different renovations, our Lyons Park Campground, Prentice and East Barstow Park restroom projects. We only have some money in there for new library materials. And then also, we have a four-year plan as the state's making some changes with our public safety radios, replacements and upgrades to be more the digital. Those are just a few of the highlights that we anticipate coming forward. There's obviously going to be some other smaller, less visible projects, but those are a few of the larger, more visible community projects. So the only recommendation that staff has at this time is that you would recommend, we'd recommend adoption of a 2018 to 2022 Capital Improvement Plan.
Move adopt plan.
Motion second to adopt this SIP plan. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no? Bid openings, fuel quotes, Mike?
Should have been, I think they're on your screens there. First bid was 4,350 gallons of unleaded gasoline with 10% ethanol. Stern oil was $2.45.2. Second item is unleaded gasoline regular, $2.68.68. Item number three is number two diesel fuel dye, $2.45.5 cents per gallon, and item four is number two diesel fuel clear, $2.75.15. Burnic service was the second quote, and item one was $2.48. Item two, $2.72. Item three, $2.45. Item four, $2.75. Stern is low on one and two, and Burnix is low on three and four.
Who accept low bids?
Motion second to accept the low bids. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no? Carry's, thank you. City manager report, John, please.
Thank you. A couple of items of note. The Planning Commission does meet next Monday, May 14th, and they do have for consideration the rezoning of 80816 Jefferson Street from general business zoning to R3 zoning. Those would be some apartment buildings. I would say, describe them as in the southwest corner of East Duke Street and Jefferson. At the last city council meeting, there's a motion and approval to create a downtown business improvement district board to help review some financing options for a downtown project. Individuals interested in serving on that board, we are asking if they submit an expression of interest formed by noon on Wednesday, May 16th, with the anticipation the city council will make appointments at your May 21st meeting. This week, we do have a street closing, Prentice Street, between East Clark Street and East Main Street. That will be closed on Thursday, May 10th, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. That's the professional baseball exhibition game that the VCDC sponsors. At noon today, some of our water department staff were recognized, the Department of Environment and Natural Resources recognized the city for 17 consecutive years of receiving the department secretary's drinking water excellence award. So we had, I believe, four of our staff there. There's some additional folks as well, but thank them for their hard work to keep our cities' drinking water safe and of the highest quality. If you're looking for some treasures, the city surplus auction is this Friday, May 11th, and that is at 5:30 p.m. at the Municipal Service Center on West Duke Street. And another homework assignment for the council, recently, we've been contacted by a Verizon representative. They are interested in locating a tower along the west side of Market Street. This would be basically between the new parking lot constructed a couple of years ago and the armory. They are looking at a tower there. By the recently adopted ordinance, it is within 300 feet of residential zoning or uses, so a stealth tower design is required for that ordinance. The council, as the landowner representatives, are asked to provide some feedback with respect to options that they might consider there. Ultimately, the way the ordinance was adopted, the Planning Commission will determine the exact location within that site, as well as what that design would be. But Verizon representative is asking you, as the landowner representatives, to give him feedback on a possible design. So he's prepared a couple of different designs that I'll distribute to you. If you have thoughts, comments, reactions to those, if you would share those with me so I can get those back to the Verizon representative as they complete their application.
Comments or questions for our city manager? Seeing none? Invoices payable? Shall we pay our bills?
Second.
Motion second to pay our bills. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no? Motion carries. We have four consensus agenda items. A, set a public hearing date of May 21st, 2018, for annual malt beverage license renewals. B, set a public hearing date of May 21st, 2018, for retail on-off sale malt beverage licenses, license including site transfer for Old Lumber Company Inc., for Old Lumber Company Grill and Bar at 11 and 15 Court Street, and site transfer of retail on-sale liquor license to include 11 Court Street. Item C, set a public hearing date of May 21st, 2018, for a special daily malt beverage and wine license for the South Dakota Shakespeare Festival, on or about June 7 to 10, 2018, at the Prentice Park Man Shell. Item D, set a public hearing date of May 21st, 2018, for a special permit to exceed permissible sound levels by no more than 50% for the South Dakota Shakespeare Festival on June 4 to 10, 2018, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m., and on June 10th, from 3:30 to 6:30 p.m. at the Prentice Park Man Shell Amphitheater for Shakespeare Festival performances.
Move approval of consensus agenda.
Motion second to approve the consensus agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no? Motion carries, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Motion second to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no? We made it before 9:00.